For CNI, May fifteenth for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would approve the district's highly capable program plan, which must be approved every year for Washington Administrative Code three nine two hyphen one seven zero hyphen two five to receive state funding. Motion please.
I move that the board approve the highly capable plan as attached to the board action report for submission to OSPI for school year two thousand seventeen eighteen to support highly capable services and the district's gifted eligibility identification process, and that the school board authorize the superintendent to apply for the allocation of funds from OSPI.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? We spent approximately fifty minutes on this issue at the intro item of this last meeting.
I just want to tee that up as well, that we, we had a rich discussion around this, which is a report basically on what we're doing now, not what we're planning to do. We've created an advanced learning task force to help us map out what we're doing in terms of program services and also program identification moving forward. So, my hope is that we can, I'm planning to support this item and would like to do it with some brevity.
Director Mack?
Yeah, I have essentially kind of two things I want to touch on. Staff supplied the board with some additional follow-up to our information. It's not included in the bar, so it's not, I mean, it's publicly available if you ask for emails, but it's not actually in the bar. So there's information that's been provided that I wanted to touch on a little bit. The two areas of concern, one is the, I have ongoing concern about the change in the appeal process and the criteria that was made after it was noticed to parents when, and families when they're nominating their students for this program. Part of the WAC, the administrative code, requires that parents be notified of what the process for appeals is, and after that process this past year started, the criteria for appeals was raised from what, what is the criteria in the, in the typical assessment process of a ninety-eighth percentile, ninety-fifth, ninety-fifth, to a ninety-ninth, ninety-ninth, ninety-ninth. And the, the question that I had asked of staff was, you know, how many students would have actually been accepted and under the, the criteria that's been used for many years? Not the ninety-ninth, 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 but the same one that is for our district testing to be used for the appeals. And what came back is essentially a hundred and forty students is, is kind of my guess, but we don't know that specifically, but there's, from my perspective, there's potentially a hundred and forty students that are being denied access of services. And so, in talking with staff, I've asked for that to be dug into a little bit further so that we can see if there maybe needs to be something to change. And staff is committed to doing that over the next couple of weeks. So I appreciate staff's responsiveness to investigating that and, and because the question that I have around it is that we don't, we don't know the racial demographics of those students. We don't know, we, we don't know by, by raising the bar on the appeal process, we don't know that that necessarily didn't create more access for students that are disadvantaged, which is one of our major goals. And in fact, it potentially helped reduce access for students that are single domain, twice exceptional students, et cetera. So that's the one thing I wanted to touch on and thank staff for, for being responsive to that. The other thing is actually I'd like to call Carrie up to, to speak a little bit more about the, the universal screening for Title One in second grade, which is part of our effort to increase access to services and identification for students that are disadvantaged. And I understand that there's been a shift in this year's process for how that will be playing out, and I'd like you to talk about that a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Carrie Hansen, Director of Student Sports Services. Yes, the, the practice of screening students in second grade at all of our title schools has been in place for about the last four years, occurs in the spring. And the purpose for that is to identify potentially students who would potentially benefit from advanced learning services, highly capable services, et cetera, and to, to get out in front of really helping to identify these underrepresented populations, find where those kids are, get them set up for services, et cetera. So, this year, or let me start with last year. So last year, we did that practice and we ran a series of screenings out at the schools, partnered with the schools, and then administered the assessment that provided for eligibility. That created a ripple effect, as you can imagine, because the decisions for facilities and enrollment planning had been made several months before. And so that was not operationally viable. So what we, what we did this year in keeping, especially with House Bill that had passed last summer that asks for highly capable programs in all districts to prioritize the identification of children of poverty within free and reduced lunch services, is we kept that practice and we are now screening those students. So we go out to thirty-two title schools, partner with the schools and the staff, provide a screener to those students, and those results are being taken a look at right now. From here, that information will be provided to the schools so that we can see and early identify kids who have potential for benefit in those highly capable and advanced learning programs.
And just for clarification, in, not this past school year, but the school year prior, the screening was provided and then those students went into the assessment, the actual assessment that would identify them as highly capable or advanced learners, and, and then they would be provided services the following school year.
Correct. Eligibility was determined in the process last year, and that eligibility then provided the opportunity to be placed or to enter an HC cohort school or to shift placement, which was occurring after enrollment planning decision-making had been taken care of and done.
And so in this year's process where we've done the screening, those students, unfortunately this year are not being, the timeline is too late for them to do the full assessment. So their screening will be for nomination for the process that is starting now, which will be completed next year, and then eligibility begins the following year.
That is correct.
And that, that timeline continues to cause me heartburn and concern because that's essentially a year and a half delay of students that we, we start to identify that they need services and, and they don't have access for a while. So recognizing that our timeline of nomination, assessment, identification, and then access to services is a long timeline and that we are moving into a process with the task force and to, to look at these processes and these different things that we're doing. I just, I want to just elevate top of mind that that timeline is concerning, that, that we need to shorten that to be able to provide students access to services sooner, and for all students and especially our most disadvantaged. So I, the, the element of the screening in the spring to help nominate students that may not have been nominated is a great step in the right direction, and we need to continue to do more to, in, in the process that we're, we're working on now.
Can I make one point of clarification?
Yes, please.
So, what I want to note is that services for students who are identified or potentially identified occur at the neighborhood school as well as the cohort. So as we provide information to stu-, to schools about their students through this process, services can be provided in the neighborhood setting. They wouldn't have the official eligibility and they wouldn't be able to enter a cohort till the following year, but services at the school are currently there for over five hundred students today. So just to be clear, we want to make sure we, we know that services are provided at the cohort, but also in the neighborhood setting as well.
Which also I think from a transitional perspective is, is a positive that you can ramp up if there's a, you know, two-year acceleration to be moving into the cohort or something of that nature. So it, so it actually, you know, there is a benefit to that.
Yes.
Director Burke? Other comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Now's the time. Director Pinkham?
It has the issue of possibly, again, the, the appeals process differing on different websites. Has that been addressed, or was that ever tracked down that we? Oh, yes, we did have two different appeals processes.
Yes, thank you for, for asking that question. Yes, there was a time, and I'm gonna, I, I want to tell you it was around December, January, when the appeals process began, that we did hear from a parent that there was inconsistent information on the website that had been located through a search. That's been corrected. We've searched and we've checked the website and the appeals process is accurate as of now, yes, but that did come up and, and it was addressed at the time.
So what was the recourse? Were probably a family that went by the old process that they found. Were they still denied, or did you give them some leeway? Okay, sorry, that was on us. We'll let you proceed.
Correct, yes. When they had, it was more of a question. We're seeing a couple of different things here. What's, they contacted advanced learning, advanced learning checked into it, found the error, corrected it, and then to my recollection, it did not interfere with that family's appeals process. And if you have information that's different from that, please let me know.
Director Burke, uh, Mack, please, excuse me.
I, I do want to create clarification around this, this, the criteria of the appeals changing from what it had been in the past and what the, the superintendent procedure states. What the criteria is. There isn't a, there isn't a testing criteria stated for appeals, but there is a criteria stated for the assessment. And that is ninety-eighth percentile, ninety-fifth and ninety-fifth. In the fall, after nominations had gone out, the district changed the practice and changed the website for the appeals to be ninety-ninth, ninety-ninth, ninety-ninth. That was done after the original nominations were done. And there were reportedly a couple of different ways of it being explained. Three deviations from the mean, ninety-ninth percentile, these are different ways of kind of talking about the same thing, but they're not exactly the same thing. And that, the, for me, the challenge is twofold. One, then the notification of that and the change happened after the nominations went out. And the second part is that there is, as far as I understand it, no empirical evidence, and in fact, the psychologists have written in to say setting this criteria for the appeals is not necessarily an appropriate way to either increase access to students who can't have it and, and maybe potentially denying students access that should have it.
Director Burke?
Without going all Robert's rules, I was wondering if we could actually get to a vote on this and, and just, I want to make sure that all directors recognize we've got a four-stage process through the task force, and the identification process is phase three of that, and there's going to be work sessions, there's going to be opportunities to weigh in. So make sure that these thoughts, these concerns are, you know, written, shared. We're gonna, we're gonna work them into the, our discussion.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, it's my turn. I will be voting no on this resolution. I am beyond thrilled that we finally have a task force and that we are going to embrace this challenge and put folks in the same room and actually have honest conversations as opposed to polarizing this issue. It has cost this district and our families and staff and us harm. The way this issue has been twirled and queasenarted around is unconscionable to me as a board director. I don't believe we have done right by our special ed community with respect to advanced learning opportunities. I don't think we have been transparent in getting rid of our AL programs throughout the city, and then we are surprised that the HCC applications skyrocketed. Bit by bit by bit by non-transparent bit. Again, I am beyond thrilled that we are embracing the challenge. But pitting communities and their children against each other is unconscionable to me. I'm distressed that the cogent answers we got via email were not attached to this resolution, and I think we can and must do better with respect to engaging our community and communicating to our community. I guess one of the things that also distresses me greatly is that it was a few short months ago that we heard from this dais, our superintendent and yourself, that we did not have an advisory committee. Yet, on page one, we are leaning on that advisory committee in our report to the state. And I feel a little PTSD because a couple of years ago, we had some of the similar conversations here, and we used the Ingram IBX program as a good reason for giving us state money, yet we had zero data whatsoever. We still have yet to see data in terms of honors for all. We have yet to see data what's working, what's not working. And most importantly, there's no there there. There's no special curriculum. We sat in a research advisory work session where a hired contractor started talking about curriculum. We had to stop her and say, is it your understanding we have highly capable curriculum? Because we don't. Again, I so look forward to the future, working together, and I'm voting no. And with that, roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director DeWolfe?
Yes.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Patu?
No.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
This motion has passed with a vote of four to two. Director Harris?
That would be a no, thank you.
This motion has passed with a vote of four to two.
Number two, renewal of Washington Schools Risk Management Pool coverage for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. This came before A and F on May fourteenth for?
For approval.
Approval of this item would accept the proposed Washington Schools Risk Management Pool Coverage Agreement for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year, and that the expenditure of two million five hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars in premium contributions to the WSRM P loss funding pool be authorized. May I have the motion, please, sir?
I move that the superintendent be authorized to accept the proposed Washington Schools Risk Management Pool Coverage Agreement for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year, and that the expenditure of two million five hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars in premium contributions to the WSRM P loss funding pool be authorized.
And I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? And in fact, there's no real choice here, kids. Roll call, please.
Director DeWolfe?
Yes.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number three, City of Seattle's, City of Seattle, Families and Ed Levy Funding for Seattle Public Schools for Summer Learning two thousand eighteen and the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. This came before A and F, May fourteenth for?
For approval, as were items four and five.
Approval of this item would accept nineteen million six hundred forty-six thousand six eighty-seven in grant funding from the City of Seattle's Families and Education Levy. Motion, please.
I move that the board authorize the superintendent to accept the grant funds totaling nineteen million six hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the City of Seattle's Families and Education Levy for the Family Support Worker Elementary, Middle and High School Innovation, Middle School Linkage, and School Health Programs with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to accept the grant funds.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues, and I see Mr. Stone, our grants administrator, ready to answer same. Ready, willing, and able. Director Mack? Roll call, please.
Director Mack?
Hi.
Director Patu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director DeWolfe?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number four, acceptance of screening and brief intervention and referral to SBIRT Services Grant for the Amount of One Million Twenty Thousand Dollars in Prens, Three Hundred Forty Thousand Dollars Per Year Through August Thirty-One, Two Thousand Twenty-One. This came before A and F, May fourteenth for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to accept the school-based screening and brief intervention and referral to treatment grant from King County in the amount of one million twenty thousand dollars, three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for the three-year period from September one, two thousand eighteen to August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Motion, please.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to accept the school-based screening and brief intervention and referral to treatment grant from King County in the amount of one million twenty thousand dollars, three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for the three-year period from September one, two thousand eighteen to August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack?
I wanted to touch on a couple things related to this, that I think this is a, it's, it's wonderful that we're getting this, these programs and, and funding this, but I wanted to create some clarification around which schools are not receiving these, these services. Is it? Because, but first, if you could do me a quick favor and kind of briefly explain what this program does, if I understand it's some suicide prevention work, and if you could briefly?
Director of Grants, Michael Stone, I will have Lisa Davidson come up and present that.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Davidson, the Manager of Prevention and Intervention. The program is to provide screening for mental health, substance use disorder, and other issues that our students might be experiencing in our middle schools, then provide a brief intervention for them, if that is what is deemed as needed, motivational interviewing, other brief supports, or a referral to more intensive services such as treatment, counseling, mentorship activities, whatever it might be. And those services will be delivered at the three schools that were newly funded, which would be Jane Adams Middle School, Whitman Middle School, and Madison Middle School. In addition to us accepting this funding, they will, the county has agreed to continue similar services at Hamilton, Seattle World School, and Meany, thank you, and Meany Middle School. In addition to these programs, we also have very similar ones at Aki Karosi, at Denny, and at Washington Middle School. The area schools are eligible for these grants based on drug and alcohol use rates, suicidal ideation rates, et cetera.
But for clarification, which middle schools do not have a program such as this?
So by elimination, I would say McClure, Eckstein, Mercer. Is that everyone that's left?
I think that might be correct.
What I'm forgetting, yeah.
I, I'll also, I'll also share that Jolynn Berge sent some data around the, because another question that I had asked related to this bar previously was around where do we have health services in all of our middle schools and nurses and full-time nurses, and where don't we? And I was trying to pull it up, and I don't actually have it in front of me, so I can't read specifically, but we have some really big gaps in our middle schools where some of them, we have, the students will have access to the health services centers and a, and a full-time nurse. Great, that's what all schools should have. And then we have other schools that have point five or point two nurse. So we have, we have gaps. We have big gaps in terms of some schools not getting the coverage for these services, and I just, I just would really want to kind of make that transparent and clear that it's wonderful to get these grants, but it's difficult when we're not providing the same thing in all schools.
Director DeWolfe?
Yeah, I guess just for that comment, for clarification, don't the schools decide their budgets for if they want a nurse? Or counselors, right? Just trying to, they get to just find their staff or?
Thank you, Jolynn.
Jolynn Berge, Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Finance. To some degree, I mean, schools are getting nursing allocations. We know that the state's only providing nine nurses for our fifty-four thousand kids. There's still big holes left. They do have some discretionary dollars, but those discretionary dollars, they're short nurses, they're short counselors, they're short librarians. They have tough choices to make every day and every year in their budgets.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Director Burke? Director DeWolfe?
Yes.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number five, Kids in the Middle Grant from the Ness Home Family Foundation. This came before A and F, May fourteenth. He told me before it was approved. Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to accept the Kids in the Middle Grant Funds from the Ness Home Family Foundation in the amount of six hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Motion, please, sir.
I move that the board authorize the superintendent to accept the Kids in the Middle Grant Funds from the Ness Home Foundation in the amount of six hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
I second the motion.
This one is always so wonderful to say thank you for because it's made such a very, very big difference. And, and also that they have encouraged other foundations to link up for the feeder schools, meaning the Satterberg Foundation. Superintendent Nyland, you worked real hard on all this. You want to say a few words, please?
I would be delighted, yes. It would be, I guess this would be the dream of having all of those arrows actually touch each other, because that's what they did. They started twenty years ago and they had ideas about how they wanted to make things work, and they didn't work. And they came back and they tried again, and they sat with the principals and they said, let's make an inventory of all of the things that you're doing and please code them. Red, yellow, green. What are the ones that have the highest impact? What are the ones that have the least impact? And let's work more on the ones that have the highest impact, and then what do you need? And within reason, they've, I've, I've never quite sat in on one of their meetings. I will make one next Wednesday before I leave. They really do have that partnership where they make the arrows touch, and then they send principals off to look at something that would solve that dilemma somewhere in the world. And then they come back and they try it in one of the schools, they work the bugs out of it. They try it in another school or two, and voila. Fifteen years later, you have this miracle. So those three middle schools are among the top five statewide in terms of the number of African-American students they serve, and they have, they're in first, second, and third place for the number of African-American students who are proficient in middle school. So, right, it works, and so, yeah, I mean, they- They really do have that partnership where they make the arrows touch, and then they send principals off to look at something that would solve that dilemma somewhere in the world, and then they come back and they try it in one of the schools, they work the bugs out of it, they try it in another school or two, and voila. Fifteen years later, you have this miracle. So those three middle schools are among the top five statewide in terms of the number of African-American students they serve, and they have, they're in first, second, and third place for the number of African-American students who are proficient in middle school. So, right, it works, and so, yeah, I mean, they're premier, 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 premier partner in that they come, they bring money, and they sit side by side with us. And when you talk to the Ness Homes, they can talk this better than I can talk this, because they have been there side by side working with us over many, many, many years.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? When you meet with them next Wednesday, please give them our undying gratitude. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Director DeWolfe?
Yes.
Director Gary?
Oh, sorry.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Patu?
Yes.
Director Pinkum?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number six, BTA four, Bex four, approval of four actions related to Daniel Bagley School Modernization and Addition Project. This came before Ops, May ten, four.
Approval.
Approval of this plan would authorize a ten million dollar budget transfer, a contract amendment, a resolution, and the GCCM Alternative Construction Delivery Method for the Bagley Modernization and Addition Project. Motion, please.
Okay, everybody, take a deep breath. This one's going to take a minute. I move that the School Board, one, approve a one-time fund transfer of two million, eight hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars from BTA three Program Contingency, five million dollars from Bex four Program Contingency, one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars from Bex four Capacity Flexibility, and one million dollars from the State of Washington's K-three Class Size Reduction Grant to the BTA four, Bex four Bagley Elementary Modernization and Addition Project Budget for a total transfer that exceeds, that equals ten thousand, ten million dollars. Wow. Two, authorize the Superintendent to execute a modification to Contract P one four five two with Miller Hayashi Architecture in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, two hundred and seven, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-three cents for additional design for the Bagley Elementary School Modernization and Addition Project with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the Superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract amendment. Three, authorize the Superintendent to utilize the GCCM Alternative Construction Delivery Method on the Bagley Modernization and Addition Project and approve Resolution two, two thousand seventeen slash eighteen dash two as attached to this Board Action Report in accordance with the Office's Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, provision in the Form D five application. And, four, authorize the Superintendent to execute a construction contract with Leiting Construction for the General Contractor Construction Manager, GCCM, contract for the Bagley Modernization and Addition Project to set the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, as defined by RCW thirty-nine dot ten dot three seventy at an amount not to exceed twenty-seven million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
And I get the show, part, I second that emotion.
Well done.
Thought my voice was loud enough, and I didn't need it. We had a vigorous conversation at intro. It had a vigorous airing in Ops, questions and concerns. It's real money. And it's complex. Director Mack?
I think I'd just like to make the comment that the, the plan that has been developed, I think, is responsive to the capacity needs and the landmarking needs and the community needs and the playground space, and that it, it does balance to the best of our ability all of those needs in the current state, and I'm ready to vote.
Director DeWolfe?
Thank you. President Harris, I just had, just a random question. I forgot to ask this. The designated historic landmark, does the city provide any resources for, for us to, I don't know, does there any mitigation money, or do they provide any resources for that designation?
They, well, the landmarking process provides no resources whatsoever to Seattle Public Schools. It is revenue-consuming.
And is that revenue some twenty percent plus usually?
It varies.
What's the number?
It varies by project. Director Harris, I don't have the, those numbers right off the top of my head for this school. I could get that information for you. It is not insignificant by any means. I'm not aware of how many times we've been before the Landmarks Board for Daniel Bagley Elementary School and to get their approval, and we are still seeking their approval. But I do know for Magnolia Elementary School, we were required to go before the Landmarks Board prior to getting approval for that project eight different times, and there is considerable cost in going before that board in preparation of documents to be submitted by our architectural and engineering teams, and then just the organizational capacity. I know it's substantially added costs to that project, and we have done an analysis of that for Dr. Herndon, and he has previously shared that with our state legislators. I don't remember that number either off the top of my head.
At some point, could you share that with your directors, and could you also share some kind of a chart that addresses appeals, et cetera, as well, and both the human capital costs and the bottom-line numbers that come with that?
Yep.
Because I don't want to ever get in anybody's rights to appeal, but, but I do want a price tag added to it. I, I think that that is part of the message we need and have to send. Other questions, comments, concerns about the Bagley Project? Say none. Roll call, please.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkum?
No.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed with a vote of six to one, five to one.
Excuse me?
This motion has passed with a vote of five to one.
Thank you. Number seven, BTA four Award Contracts, K five zero nine eight, K five zero nine nine, K fifty-one hundred, K fifty-one oh one, K fifty-one oh two for athletic field lighting projects at Ballard, Cleveland, Franklin, and Roosevelt High Schools and Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. This came before Ops, May ten, four.
Consideration?
Approval of this item would award contracts with the King County Directors Association, KCDA, with a total combined amount of two million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars for the athletic field lighting projects at Ballard High School, Cleveland High School, Franklin High School, Roosevelt High School, and Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. Motion, please.
I move that the School Board authorize the Superintendent to execute the following contracts with the King County Directors Association, KCDA, for athletic field lighting projects. Contract K five zero nine eight in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and three dollars for Ballard High School. Contract K five zero nine nine in the amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars for Cleveland High School. Contract K five one zero zero in the amount of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hun, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars for Franklin High School. Contract K five one zero one in the amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars for Roosevelt High School, and contract K five one zero two in the amount of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars for Robert Eaglestaff Middle School, plus Washington State Sales Tax with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the Superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contracts.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack?
Good evening, Mr. Rest.
Good evening.
This came to Ops, and we had a good conversation around one that, that it's projected to be under budget, which is one thing that is nice to hear. And there were questions raised in testimony tonight that have come since, that didn't reach my ears in the Ops Committee or in the introduction related to a couple of things, more than two. And I think I'll go backwards on them. One of them, the questions that was raised was about the timing of when the lights will get turned off, and the idea that students will be using it up until seven o'clock, but the rest of the community will be using it until ten. And as I got to thinking about that, I was wondering, what is our joint use agreement with parks on these fields, and is that true, that it will be student use up until seven, and then after it'll be ten o'clock, and they'll be shut off every night at ten?
I, I can't speak to the joint use agreement, Director Mack, off the top of my head. Maybe Dr. Herndon can. I can tell you in conversations with high school administrators, athletic directors, they see the opportunity to extend the use of the field for varsity, then junior varsity, and then C-level teams. I do know that those conversations have been ongoing, specifically at the high schools. I'm unsure about Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. I know that is a location that we have discussed for some activities to be held for Lincoln High School, given that it does not have a field on-site. We've also looked at utilization of Lower Woodland Park. I can?
Could I have Dr. Herndon speak to the specific joint use agreements that's not attached to this bar, but I think that the details of that are actually really important to understand?
Yeah, so the way the joint use agreement works is that for both Seattle Public Schools fields and Seattle Parks fields, there's a guarantee of time for Seattle Public Schools, high school teams to use fields on Parks fields until six forty-five, on SPS fields until seven o'clock. After that, because of our SPS fields, we book those fields, we prioritize our teams first. So if teams need to go longer than that, our teams will go longer than that, and they will have that guarantee on our SPS fields. For Parks fields, they don't have that guarantee. So after six forty-five, it means that community teams generally will be prioritized ahead of SPS athletic teams, which is why we're looking at lighting our SPS fields, because that will guarantee us more field time for our teams.
And just to clarify that, that is, Seattle Public Schools books the time on our fields?
Correct.
Do the lights stay on if something's not booked?
No. So if there is an, anytime Seattle Public School teams are using the fields, you know, we don't charge ourselves. The lights would be on for our students. If there's a community use, including a youth team, so we do have club teams and youth athletic teams that are outside of SPS, we charge them the utilities of whatever that may be. So it's much like renting a gym or an auditorium in our buildings. If they want lights or sound or heat, then we charge that utility for that. So if they want lights, they would have to pay for the lights that particular time. But if they haven't paid for lights, the fields aren't going to be lit. They don't stay on.
And then, and is there a deadline of ten o'clock?
It varies. Each field's a little bit different, and I think those were each outlined in the CPAs for each of the fields. The, the latest field we have is Memorial Stadium, which has a shut-off time of midnight, I believe. So anything that's happening there, the rest of our fields vary anywhere between ten and eleven. It just depends on the field. And if you've been out at one of the fields, I've been out there for games, they do shut off at the, at the shut-off time, they will shut off. So if you have a football game going on, the teams know, okay, lights shut off at ten or ten-thirty, and they shut off at ten or ten-thirty.
I can't help myself. Flashlight tag.
Just end of contest, whatever it is, yes.
Director Burke?
Some of the, the comments that we had heard in, in public testimony were, were new to me today, and so I'm wondering, the lighting that's going in at these fields, is that something which is, that we can comp at other fields that already have lighting in terms of the type of lighting, the height of the pole, reflection from the fields? Is this, is this a typical installation, or is there anything about it that's unique and new?
No, this would be a unique and new installation. It would be comparable to the installation that Blanchett High School has in the City of Seattle. We have worked closely with a lighting consultant who has indicated that we will introduce a negligible amount of light pollution, given the existing background levels at the various sites that we're talking about. The LED lights that are being proposed are highly directional. The higher the pole, the more directional, and the better ability we have to control glare. I'd also note to the Board that we've worked with a noise consultant and a traffic consultant on this project, and the traffic consultant was both analyzing traffic and parking as part of our CIPA process.
The, the data from that, is that something that, that can be presented to the Board as part of this work? Like, what is the timing for this, these projects to start, and?
Projects would be anticipated to start once we get City of Seattle approval. We have to go through a MUP two process, getting a special exception for the light, the height of the light, of the, the height of the light poles. Thirty feet is allowed by code. We are proposing seventy to ninety feet, and we're proposing that because it will prevent glare and light levels from leaving, leaving our property, and that was affirmed in our CIPA decision, and there was testimony from a lighting consultant speaking to that in our CIPA appeal hearings.
So what would be the ramifications if we wanted to, to go another cycle on this and be able to see, you know, the experience at Blanchett? I assume it has similar pole height, similar intensity?
Correct, it does.
Similar types of reflection and background noise? Would there be time for us to, to do that in this process?
Yes, there would be time for you to do that in this process. So.
Director Pinkum, then Director Mack?
Thank you for answering the questions here. It was also brought up that there were community meetings for these?
There were.
Events, but apparently there was also a community meeting where you took some questions, and there's supposed to be a follow-up meeting, which never occurred. Were the, do you know if those questions were answered? Because you collected cards, and were there issues addressed that then wasn't shared in a follow-up meeting, or when, why wasn't the follow-up meeting scheduled?
I can tell you that we had community meetings, and we had follow-up community meetings. I attended some of the community meetings and some of the follow-up meetings, not all of them, Director Pinkum, because some of them occurred on board nights. Can't speak specifically as to why the follow-up didn't occur, but it's something that we definitely try to implement, is to follow up with community when questions arise.
I believe this was for the Franklin site, that there wasn't a follow-up meeting, or the community there wasn't aware of any follow-up after the initial.
Director Mack?
So there was also a question raised and comment in testimony earlier around the additional parking and traffic impact and so forth, and Director Burke just kind of mentioned this as well. There are a number of details and documents that are not attached to this bar, including the CIPA, the Joint Use Agreement, which is more, you know, details around like when the lights will actually get shut off, and who gets to use it when, and those sorts of things that is important for the community to understand. It's also important for me as a board member to understand. So CIPA, Joint Use Agreement, and then the noise and traffic study, that that data is not actually provided here, and I haven't seen that, and I hadn't personally thought of that issue prior. So I have the same question that Director Burke has as to whether or not we can actually delay the vote on this tonight until we get that information.
So I can tell you that CIPA?
So I can tell you that CIPA documents are hundreds of pages for each project, and they are difficult to make ADA accessible because of the formats in which they have been developed. They have lots of embedded graphs, pictures, but happy to make those available to the school board. But they're difficult to make ADA accessible on our website.
Now, when you say happy to make them available to the school board, you mean put those in a bu, let me finish, please. Put them in a binder, put them in the board office, so that any member of the public can come look at them. Would that be your understanding of accessible?
That would be.
Okay. Thank you. Director Mack, continue, please.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, my question is procedural in terms of, we've got a motion on the table, and is it possible to make a motion to...
We have not all spoken to the motion on the table, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. It's, it's inappropriate to make an amendment or move it, or to table it to a time certain when the rest of your colleagues haven't had an opportunity yet. Director Pinkham?
And I'm just curious, you, you mentioned Blanchett High School, and that's kind of, I think, more unique. It's their field, you know, to the west of it's their school, and to the east of it's hillside, and then to the north is Arterio, and then to the south. But then these other sites, they got apartment complexes around them, and so it seems like a little bit different if we use Blanchett as a site to kind of examine how these lights would work when there's different conditions at each site. In particular, if there's low-income housing or subsidized housing, and I was thinking about this, a lot of those people have to work, maybe multiple jobs, and if we have lights on there past 10:00 PM, it's true, they may not be home, but they also may need to try to get some sleep, and if any reflective light may be occurring. So just curious, so we got to watch out for that if we're using Blanchett as a model site to look at other sites?
Director DeWolff?
Thank you, President Harris. I appreciate all, all my fellow board directors' comments. I think for me, particularly as somebody that lives in central Seattle, Capitol Hill, fastest-growing neighborhood in the city, densest neighborhood in the city, I consider myself an urbanist. I, I feel comfortable not prioritizing cars, and also, we do live in a growing city, and that is the tension here, I think, and particularly around the multifamily housing folks. I don't want to assume for them what they think. I live in multifamily housing, in an urban setting, and some of the issues around the lights, I think somebody mentioned something about walking a large dog and how the lights might be an issue for that. Those don't necessarily rise to that level of kind of deep concern for me. I certainly hear the, the neighborhood's feedback, but I think as the city grows, we are letting, about 1,000 folks come into the city each, each week, and these are just some of the parts of the growing pains, I think, of growing into our, our big city. So I, I'm having a hard time...
Director Burke?
Thank you.
I appreciate the way you articulated that, Director DeWolff, because I wanted, after this discussion, I just wanted to be very clear that my concerns personally are not whether we should or shouldn't put lighting. I believe we should and really need to, because we need full utilization of those fields. I think we owe it to our students, and we owe it to the community that's, that's, you know, that, for those to be a community resource to use. My interest is to make sure that as we look at potentially a new strategy for lighting, that, which sounds great, LED lighting, focused, you know, narrower field of view, so therefore it has to go higher, everything about it absolutely resonates for me. But I was just surprised to hear a level of concern that came a little bit late in the game, and I wanted to understand what that was about. So I don't want to read 100 pages of CIPA documents. I'm going to go with the trust mentality that that, that the people who've done those documents have done their due diligence, but I would be interested in seeing what that implementation looks like, or hearing that, that a comparable site. Basically, that we're not breaking new ground at risk. And, and so that was, that was my concern in bringing it up, not so much to get into the procedural or the CIPA.
Okay. I am going to try and wrap this up with some questions and some comments. You mentioned CIPA appeals, plural. How many appeals have there been?
There have been five.
And that has cost us...
One, one for each project.
Okay. That has cost us approximately how much money?
Approximately $25,000 to $40,000 per project.
Okay. And on CIPA, folks get notice, correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And they send the notice to the neighborhood, correct?
They send the notice to those folks who have been, who have asked to be notified. We send the notice to certain departments, and then within a geographical boundary of the, of the project.
Okay. So, so they had due process, I guess, is my point. Deputy Nielsen, can you come answer a couple of softballs here, please? If we are partnering with the City of Seattle, if we signed an MOU, if we are in the fastest-growing metropolitan city in the country, and we have no land left, then doesn't it imply that we need to be good partners to the city when we are asking them to be good partners to us?
Indeed, it does.
You want to expand on that?
Well, let's start by saying that I don't play softball, so, nor do I play hardball. Certainly, the goal of our relationship with the city is to be strong partners as we're serving our public, to save taxpayer dollars, to streamline process, to ensure taxpayers that we are utilizing their resources most effectively. And any relationship that improves that opportunity is certainly in our best interest and that of our, our supporters and our taxpayers, and our critics, for that matter. The process described earlier and the costs are considerable, and those are taxpayer dollars. So anything that we can do to improve is good.
Okay. I intend to vote yes for this. I am not incognizant of the neighborhood concerns, but they have had their due process. We don't have any land left in this city, and I will vote no on any motion to send this down the road for another hearing. So if someone wants to make a motion, have at it. That's why I get the big bucks. Go.
We just mentioned the partnership agreement with the City of Seattle, and we have a number of mechanisms for coordinating around traffic and school safety and things like that. So the, I, I think my remaining question around the comments that were brought up tonight was the traffic studies and the concern around the traffic flow around the fields, and whether or not that has been reviewed by the Safe Schools Committee?
So...
Of these different ones, to, to ensure that we do have safe traffic patterns, et cetera.
Director Mack, as, as part of the conditions on this project, when the projects are complete and field lights are installed, we are going back to analyze traffic. And so we can have actual conditions rather than theoretical conditions. But that is one of the requirements on, on the project. Another requirement is that we work with the schools such that they don't have large events at the schools and a large, you know, non-curriculum use of the athletic fields. So there will be close coordination with parks and schools on these, and we have to go back and do further traffic work when we have the, the actual conditions in place. There are, they've utilized traffic studies and theoretical analysis at, at this moment in time.
So just for clarification, we put the lights in, we start doing the events, and then we're going to go back and coordinate with Parks and SDOT on potential changes that might need to be done?
And we do that with all of our school projects. The, we find that our traffic engineers are very conservative in their projections, so, yeah.
Thanks for the clarification. Director Pinkham?
Well, given that, I don't think I have enough information to vote on this positively, given what I've heard from some public testimony, and what's missing in this bar here. No, I don't expect to go through 100 pages of the CIPA, but knowing that there are some communities that hate that were promised a follow-up meeting and didn't occur, and so some of their answers aren't, weren't addressed, or they feel they weren't addressed. So, and it sounds like you're not sure if every community had their, their follow-up meeting. So I will go ahead and, and actually make the motion that we delay this for the June 27th meeting until we see and get some information that answers such questions as, did all communities get their follow-up meeting as needed?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns on the amendment? Director Burke?
Just to understand, with this motion on the table, what is the, I know in the bar it indicates the, the possibility of completing projects in the summer, but it's not a guarantee that all of them we're going to complete in the summer. Do you believe that this is still appropriate?
We are going to work diligently. We still have to go through the City of Seattle special exception process, Director Burke. So, and we've, you know, outlined timeframe with the City of Seattle, but they need personnel in order to implement those activities, and we don't have the opportunity to control what their personnel work on.
Can I ask the question a different way, which is, should this work not complete in the summer, will it, will it be scheduled to still complete before the dark?
It, it will be scheduled to complete as soon as we have all the correct permits.
Or it can, it can continue into the school year?
Correct. It can continue into the school year.
That's the relevant question. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack? The delay, just to get some additional information that we're requesting, isn't, is that going to slow down your timeline in terms of getting permits or doing this work?
No.
It would just actually create some transparency and additional information?
We will, we, we are proceeding and working with the City of Seattle, but they, they are controlling that process. We don't control that process. We, we are waiting for them to publish their decisions. They have not published on any of these five projects that are before you tonight. We will be probably back before you if we were to delay to the next meeting before they have published their decisions. So we'll not be delaying the project whatsoever.
As I think everyone on this dais knows, I'm a bit of a process and policy fanatic, I guess. And I, if it's not going to actually slow down our actual process to do the work, I'm supportive of getting the lights, but I think having some of these additional questions answered, doing a little bit more due diligence around it would make me more comfortable with, with a, a yes vote than if I was required to vote on it today. So I would, I want to support Director Pinkham's delay vote.
I have a point of clarification for the makers of the motion and the second for now, or whomever. What will be presented to us in two weeks that hasn't been presented to us now, because we need to give staff direction if you wish more transparency? I think you, I think we owe it to the staff to be very clear about what our expectations are, deadlines, et cetera.
Thank, thank you for bringing that up, because that is, that is precisely what I think we should do if, if we're asking for a little bit more time, we should be very specific. My interest, as I indicated, was not to add more documents to this, but to provide a connection to the community that is concerned about light pollution, that what they can look at as a comparable. Because again, I, I intend to support this, but I would like for the community to be supportive of it as well, and for us to not be, you know, perceived as railroading it through, but rather bringing folks along with us. And it sounds like this is a better solution than what is in place at many fields, and I would like for people to understand, yes, this is a better solution, and we're investing wisely. That's my hope.
So, so what does that mean in terms of community engagement? Help me understand what you're asking for and by when?
That would mean reaching out to community that has expressed a concern with, with exactly the information that was shared here, that a comparable site would be Blanchett High School, and that they should experience that personally in the evening.
And how do we communicate that out to where it hits your targets? Community is an awfully big word. I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to...
I would note that all of our community meetings, we have highlighted the fact that they should look at the Blanchett High School installation. So that's not new information to those folks who've attended our community meetings.
Thank you. That's new information for me.
Yep.
Director Mack, and then Director Pinkham? I think, yeah, if that has been shared, you know, adamantly, then that's good to know. I think, for me, it's a joint use agreement, and the clarification around what the fields will likely be used for, and at what time the lights go off, and that that information would be helpful to add to this. And I don't know what form that comes in, if a paragraph clarifying it, or the actual joint use agreement, but additional details around specifying the, who's using it when, and that sort of thing. Director Pinkham?
Yeah, yeah, for me, it would be a follow-up with the, the community, and I guess that's a big word.
Yeah.
But in particular, maybe Franklin and Cleveland, those that came here and testified today to address their concerns. And well, particular for Franklin, where they said, hey, we wrote out on these cards to share your questions, said we'd have a follow-up meeting after we submit these cards, no follow-up meeting. So hopefully they'll get, find those cards wherever they may be, get those questions answered for them, so that hopefully the things, their concerns that they shared are being addressed. And then another thing I was thinking about, you know, you said Robert Eaglestaff will be getting some lighting too as well. And I heard some concerns raised about the utilities that we're running, and then where the lights are going to go is, are those going to be in conflict? That you may be digging a 10-foot hole to put in a lighting pole, but then it's right next to a gas line, or right next to another utility line?
No, that, Director Pinkham, as part of the synthetic turf field installation that was done last year, we ran all of the conduit, and we installed the caissons. Alls we need to do is come and erect the poles.
Okay, so it's already prepared, just need to pick the poles?
There would be minimal below-grade work at Robert Eaglestaff.
Okay. And then I know it's going to probably be hard to say, hey, go out to Blanchett. We're in June now, 10:00 PM in June is going to be different than 10:00 PM in November and September, when we may have people out there playing football. So we might have to have people, well, go out to Blanchett at midnight to see what the light may be like. But then, will the lights be on at midnight at Blanchett?
I'm going for a last comment, and then we need to do a roll call on the amendment. I don't know whether or not the cards y'all collected at Franklin have folks' names and addresses on them. I don't know how we can expect our staff that has been through CIPA appeals are supposed to go out and knock on doors, because four or five folks have, have raised good concerns. We have a shortage of land in this city. We have a shortage of athletic fields in this city. We are on record and celebrated state champions. Earlier in this meeting, about athletics being the keys to success for many of our students, I don't think it's fair to send our staff, who's already been through the CIPA appeal process, which is a bear, as I understand it. That's due process, and those questions were answered. I will be voting no on the motion to continue this until June 27. I will be voting yes on the resolution when it gets to us, whether it's tonight or in two weeks. Roll call on the amendment, please, and that is to move it to June 27 for some form of community engagement that has... community engagement that has yet to be specified, that is going to happen in the next two weeks. Director Burke?
Way to tee it up. I'm going to go no.
It's on the amendment. We're voting presently.
Director DeWolff?
No.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Batu? Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Harris?
No.
This motion is not passed by a vote of two...
We are back to the main resolution. Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Yes.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Batu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
No.
Director Harris?
Yes.
This motion is passed with a vote of five to one.
Thank you. Number eight, Bex 4, award construction contract P5116, bid number B01839, to Rhine Demolition LLC for Wing Luke Elementary School Replacement Project Phase 1. This came before OPS May 10 for...
Consideration.
Approval of this item would provide authorization for the superintendent to enter into a construction contract in the amount of $1,815,875 plus sales tax for the Wing Luke Elementary School Replacement Project Phase 1. Motion, please.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute construction contract P5116 with Rhine Demolition LLC for the Wing Luke Elementary School Replacement Project Phase 1 in the amount of $1,815,875 plus Washington State sales tax with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary action to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? This also had a very healthy airing during intro and a very lengthy conversation, if not debate in OPS. Questions? Director Burke?
Just for the record, knowing that this has already, you know, somewhat been covered, but during the design process for this building, the schematic design and detailed design, was a design evaluated that included maintaining the existing addition?
Yes, a design was evaluated. It was not feasible to maintain that existing, the newer addition. It literally wraps around the existing gymnasium. It did not allow for the expansion of the existing gymnasium. It would have been demolished had we expanded the existing gymnasium, Director Burke, and we need to expand the existing gymnasium to meet the educational program requirements.
So it's safe to say that the idea of maintain, of including or incorporating that existing structure was eliminated by the design team that was evaluating the program or the project?
Yep. And I personally went out there to look at that existing addition to look to see why it could not be saved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Director Mack?
Mr. Bass, can you refresh my memory how many times we've had this conversation about how this project has been planned and decided that because in order for these projects to move forward, they come to the board multiple times? So this, this is one of those steps. How many times before have we had the conversation around whether or not demolishing that was appropriate and actually building the new building was appropriate?
At least half a dozen times that we've had the conversation about whether, you know, that addition could be saved.
So we've talked about it six times at least, and we've decided repeatedly as a board that this is, while maybe not ideal, the most appropriate use for this building and our students.
Correct.
Just want to clarify that.
Director Pinkham?
And then true with any new building that we have to come out, we have to promise that'll be used as a school for so many years. Have we met that with the prior addition?
There was no state funding, so there was no commitment to utilize that addition for 30 years that we have gone through and reviewed the record on that, Director Pinkham. I will also note, as part of our master planning efforts on all of our projects, we are looking at where we can add additions before beginning the project so we don't run into this problem again.
Yeah, we ran into something similar with Eaglestaff where we got now new portables coming, blocking murals, so we needed, again, do more due diligence there.
Director Burke, did you have something to add, sir? Director Mack? Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Yes.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Batu? Director Pinkham?
No.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion is passed with a vote of five to one.
Okay, we are at introduction. We have two introduction items. Please, let's remember, we have had two work sessions plus additional time on SMART goals, all of which were open to the public, should they have chosen to come join our happy selves. Approval of 2018-19 district SMART goals. This came before executive committee May 17 for consideration. Since that time, we had a very robust work session. Approval of this item would approve four SMART goals for the district in 2018-19 school year. Multi-tiered systems of supports, also known as MTSS, eliminating opportunity gaps, also known as EOG, secondary revisioning, and engagement collaboration. I see Erin Bennett at the box. Please take it away.
Good evening, Erin Bennett, Government Relations and Strategic Initiatives. And actually, you said pretty much everything I was going to say. We've had the three work sessions and have had new versions after each of those meetings, and the goal owners are, and their teams are behind me, and we look forward to discussing these more.
I had a point of clarification, and probably Assistant Superintendent Bergy needs to address it. The board came to consensus previously for $3 million funding. What was presented at the last work session was less than that. I believe I said something along the lines of, I really like the entrepreneurial spirit and would like to keep that $3 million funding there for the goal owners to have some room in the budget to pitch new ideas to us. Do we have $3 million or do we have $2 point something or other?
You have the $3 million that you authorized. The difference is placed into a reserve. Between the $2.6 and the $3, the difference gets put into a reserve until we have board direction.
Okay, so that means the goal owners, if they've got phenomenal ideas, they've got their problem statement, they've got their theory of action, and they've got an accountability loop, can come back to this board anytime during the next year and pitch to us. Is that correct?
That's your prerogative, of course.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns? I think we beat this horse pretty big in the past, and it looks to me like Superintendent Nyland would also like to address this. Please do so.
Oh, thank you. I'll be brief. Thank you to the board for moving this into this time slot. So I guess for the listeners, this becomes a major driver for everything that we do in the district. Well, I shouldn't say everything that we do in the district, but for the heavy lift items that we do in the district. So it will be embedded in the SMART goals, obviously. It will be embedded in the CSIPS that schools go forward with. It's embedded in cabinet goals and evaluations. It's embedded in extended cabinet goals and evaluations. And by doing it now, it allows us to launch that with principals in June, gives them time to think about it, gives them an opportunity to come back in August for SLI and then allows them...
SLI means?
Summer Leadership Institute, thank you. And then they can work with their staff as their staff come back to work in August. And then the try day, the, I have no idea, time responsibility and incentive, day that we have before the first day of school so that staff can be on board and we can hit the ground running in the fall. So thank you for doing due diligence on this and the three work sessions and giving marching orders to us.
And the try day, subject matter, has that been chosen as yet?
I don't know that. I believe, I mean, the last two days, you know, last two years and two days, it's been around relationships and resiliency and going deeper on that concept, so.
Okay. Comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke?
I want to thank my colleagues and Superintendent Nyland and goal owners. This is sort of the third bite at the apple for me, and it's, each time it gets more, feels more relevant. It feels like it's, like we're truly all, whether we say aligning our arrows or pulling on the flywheel or, you know, digging in the same way. So it's a pretty cool thing. I think it should become an integral part of our strategic plan work.
Director Pinkham, did you have something to add, sir?
Yeah, sorry that Director Burke has to bite in the three-year-old apple. Oh, apple sauce, okay. But, yeah, thank you to the board and staff for, you know, moving us forward with our SMART goals and Director Burke to help us, what does SMART stand for? He helped explain that, which I just thought it was just SMART as being goals. It's a good idea to have these, but I just wanted to, again, thank the staff all around the office and people up here. Thank you for moving us forward in the right direction.
Okay, then. Number two and the last item of the evening intro. Bex 4, approval of budget increase and award construction contract P5096 to Hensel Phelps Construction for the Queen Anne Elementary School Classroom and Gymnasium Addition Project. This came before OPS May 10 for approval. Approval of this item would approve a one-time fund transfer in the amount of $2,900,000 from the Bex 4 program contingency to the project budget and authorize the superintendent to enter into a construction contract in the amount of $13,283,000 for the Queen Anne Elementary School Classroom and Gymnasium Addition Project. A personal plea. I was chair of audit and finance. I worked really hard trying to understand the shifting of funds between Bex and all of that. At some point, can we start doing pictographs and be advised when the funds are returned after we've transferred them in keeping with our increased transparency? I understand that we have to move money. I understand that we're doing it right and we're passing our audits. But if we could figure out a way to show that or show the flow, that would help me immensely explaining this kind of information to folks that ask.
To the public, yes. Yes, we can definitely provide that information to you, Director Harris, because it's what I use to track our projects, so.
Director Mack?
I second that. That is something that I've been trying to get a better handle on as well, and the document that's provided to the Bex BTA Oversight Committee actually does show that information a little bit more clearly. So it's a good conversation to have about how that gets folded into the reports that come to OPS and the budget, so.
Yep.
That's teed up, and thank you.
Pleasure. Other questions, comments, concerns? Director DeWolff?
Hey, listen, I'm trying to get you out of here. Have at it. Go for it. Please.
I know we're, I'm sensing we might be kind of dialing down here. I just want to remind folks that on Friday at 11:00 AM, MLK and Rainier, the event for Ryan De La Cruz and gun safety in our community, so...
Okay, that's good of the order. You're out of order. Does anybody have...you're out of order for all the right reasons. Next question. Does anybody have comments, questions, concerns to the intro item on the table presently? Seeing none, good of the order. Go for it, Director DeWolff.
This Friday, 11:00 AM at the corner of MLK and Rainier with folks from Southend and Franklin families and community partners, just celebrating the life of Ryan De La Cruz and also calling for gun responsibility in our communities.
And again, Nate Van Duser, you rock. Thank you ever so much, and you will miss us, and you can do international peace after you've done this. We are adjourned at 8:55.